All right, we will move along with our agenda. 3.2A, proclamations in the board, and I don't think we have anything there. And 3.2B, public comments, and Cindy, has anybody wrote anything? All right, we don't have anything there. We do need to amend the agenda. We have two things that need to go on to the agenda today. A motion to amend the agenda under 3.3C, our tax administrators' report. Viewing applications, the 2021 Board of Equalization and Review. And then we have a second one that we need to amend. 3.4A, county managers' report, day mark lease agreement. Does I hear a motion that we amend the agenda?
So moved, second.
All right, Mr. Tim Phillips made the motion, and Mr. Dennis Aldridge seconded. How would you vote, Mr. Woody Hall Young, Jr.?
Would Hall Young, Jr., vote for it?
Martha Hicks votes for it.
Tim Phillips for it.
Dennis Aldridge, yeah.
All right, we will add that to our agenda. All right. 3.3A, resolution supporting National Fair Housing Month. We do this every year. Phillip, do you have anything you want to say on the resolution about this?
That's how wonderful the resolution is, and that the Community Development Block grant, we are still finishing up those new homes for those Avery County citizens that received that grant, and it is a wonderful program. Is there any part of the resolution I need to read aloud? So April is Fair Housing Month, so Michelle will be proud of us. Michelle Ball at the High Country Council of Government asked us to pass this resolution so she can turn them in for everybody in the high country. So she'll send these into the state.
All right, I hear that we adopt this resolution for the fair housing.
So moved.
All right. Mr. Woody Hall Young made the motion to adopt, and Tim Phillips seconded. How do you vote, Mr. Woody Hall Young, Jr.?
Would Hall Young, Jr., vote for it?
Martha Hicks votes for it.
Tim Phillips for it.
Dennis Aldridge, yeah.
All right. And then we'll move right along to the 3.3B, Contract of Specialized Consultant Service LLC. You want to talk about that?
Yes, ma'am. This is our FEMA representative, which today we have eight submittals into FEMA. There are four more to go in for the month of January and February. And those four that we're currently working on getting ready to submit is in a total of $80,000. So this is simply to continue that contract that will run out March 31st through October 31st, 2021. Same agreement as we had for the last six months, just changing the dates.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the agreement?
They adopt.
Second.
All right, Mr. Tim Phillips made the motion to adopt, and Mr. Dennis Aldridge seconded. How did you vote, Mr. Woody Hall Young, Jr.?
Would Hall Young, Jr., vote for it?
Martha Hicks votes for it.
Tim Phillips for it.
Dennis Aldridge, yeah.
All right. 3.3C, Tax Administration Report, 3 cents.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Afternoon, sir.
For starters, I would like to present the February collections totals for your approval at $329,025.67.
All right, I hear a motion to approve.
So moved.
All right, I hear seconded.
Second.
All right, Mr. Woody Hall Young, Jr. made the motion, and Dennis Aldridge seconded. How do you vote, Mr. Woody Hall Young, Jr.?
Would Hall Young, Jr., vote for it?
Martha Hicks votes for it.
Tim Phillips for it.
Dennis Aldridge, yeah.
All right.
And just for enlightenment purposes, with those collections coming in, we're currently at 95.15% collections on 2020 taxes. Second notices should hopefully be hitting mailboxes today, tomorrow. So we're at 95% without second notices having gone out. And for comparison purposes, last year we were on 94.02%. So despite everything that's gone on, our collection totals for this, for the 2020 tax cycle are in advance of what we had in 2019. That probably has something to do with the sales numbers, you know, taxes having to be paid for everything to sell like it is, so I'm sure that's helping it. So our collection totals are, in my opinion at least, Mr. Barryer can judge this as well as I, or better, we're in pretty good shape for what we've done. We also took some steps over the last couple of months to submit some final letters to delinquent taxpayers that are an excessive amount of time overdue. And doing that generated in a little over $41,500 income coming in of people coming to pay those taxes back up. So we have had some money coming in the door from previous years, so that's going to put us in better shape for our 10-year totals, of which I wasn't smart enough to bring this year, or this meeting, but I'll have them for you next time around. So in my opinion, our collections are in a really good spot right now. But Mr. Young, sometimes with collections coming to views, and for this, for this meeting, I will present to you the amount of $310.83.
Moved, we approved.
All right. Mr. Woody Hall Young, Jr. made the motion to approve, and Tim Phillips seconded. How did we all vote? How about you, Mr. Woody Hall Young, Jr.?
Would Hall Young, Jr., vote for it?
Martha Hicks votes for it.
Tim Phillips for it.
Dennis Aldridge, yeah.
All right.
And just a quick glimpse at sales numbers. As you can see, we're continuing the rather robust sales. We almost doubled what we did last February, so 66 sales. Their sales, assessment of sales ratio is at 73%, which just, you know, it just really indicates, like I say, Mr. Aldridge asked this question a couple of meetings back, it just shows that our appraisal is out of date, and we're finalizing hopefully our revaluation now for those new values to go online first of next year. So the sales spike that we've seen over the last 18 months has kind of thrown a wrench into that. We're having to redo two years' worth of work in half the time. So we're working to get that number much higher, and hopefully we can proceed in a way to get that ratio back up where it used to be. But it's just, you know, 66 sales for February is, in my opinion, unheard of. Any questions or comments about sales, collections, anything like that before we proceed to applications? I would just simply like to read out the names of the people who have applied for the Board of Equalization and Review for us. We do have three returnees, but we do, technically four returnees, who has been on the board before, but has taken a couple of years off, but with a little grovelling and begging. It's amazing what you can get people to agree to. So Ms. Edith Traver, Didi Traver, has agreed to come back for us. She's been with us for 13, 14 years doing this. She's been the chairperson for the last three years, so we're very fortunate to have her experience coming in. Mr. Clay Pat Dale has also been with us for the last three years, so he's agreed to come back with us one more time. Same goes for Mr. Moes Brazwell. He has become an integral part of what we do and is excited to come help us out each year, and we're happy to have you back. And Ms. Amy Vaughn, who's been on the board before, local real estate agent, has many, many years of real estate experience. She's agreed to help us out this year. Then we've got a new one, Mr. Samuel Woody. He's a home inspector. He's been a contractor. He's got building experience and some real estate experience, so he's agreed to help us out this year. So these are the applications I would like for you to take under review, and we'll discuss any approvals next month.
All right.
And all of those seats are open, I mean, they'll all be?
Well, we reappoint every year.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir. As much as I would like to try to make some of those seats permanent where people can't get away from us, we had a case this year where we had a member who had been with us for the last couple of years, had almost 40 years of appraisal experience, but she's decided that she is on to other pastures for this time of year, and asked if we not include her this time. That would have been one that I wouldn't have let get away under any circumstance, but I certainly understand and am appreciative for her past services. So those that continue to come back for us, Mr. Barryer can speak, it's not the easiest thing in the world to get people to come in and do this, so those that come back year after year, we're very grateful for.
We've been blessed by the people that will come and represent us on those.
Ms. Traver, if she ever decides that she wants to leave, she will not be allowed. I will find a way to lock her in the office with food and water to keep her. She is extraordinary. So, all right. I thank you all very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Traver. Thank your staff for us. All right, we'll move right along to 3.4, County Commissioners Reports and Requests. Part A is our county managers' report.
Okay, afternoon, everyone. We'll start with COVID, and start with vaccines. So as of Thursday, your Avery County has given, last Thursday, 2,904 first doses and 2,021 second doses of vaccine at the Ag Center. And of course, we did get our teachers done last Thursday, so I don't think those numbers are in this number. And then what we did Friday, the doses we gave Friday are not in this number because the website has not been updated from the state since Thursday, so we look for that to go up. It was a proud day to take the mobile clinics out and to hit all the schools. I think everybody enjoyed that, and I just want to applaud the COVID team, and Paul, and Debbie especially, for all their hard work and effort in coming up with that great idea to take the health department out on wheels. So we called it Hope on Wheels is what we called it Thursday, and I think that's very fitting because we did have vaccine. This week, if you know anyone, North Carolina resident that are 65 and older, that is, works for a school system, pre-K through 12th grade, that can be any employee of a school system, janitors, lunchroom, bus drivers, librarians, that is who it is open to. At this time, we have 410 vaccines in our possession, first dose. We have appointments for only 82 of those. Community paramedicine needs 20 of those, so we're looking at around 300 and so vaccines that we could administer. We have put this on the radio in Watauga County, but I talked to their manager, they're caught up. I've talked to Wilkes County, they feel they're caught up. Mitchell and Yancy feel they will be caught up after this week. Talked to some other neighboring counties that we may be able to help. But if you know anyone in the state of North Carolina that fits that criteria, we do have doses available. We will open those phone lines Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 9:00 to 11:00.
What will be the vaccination day?
The day will be Friday. We will do Friday, yes, because we got second doses, we got 200 second doses scheduled already for Friday. We have those in, second doses are here, and that's from 1:00 to 4:00. So if we can get enough appointments, we'll open up that morning, Friday morning.
That's what it sounds like.
Do you have a question, Mr. Young?
Yes.
Okay. Now, let's talk about COVID and the positive cases. So thank you, Avery County and the citizens, and we only have 47 cases the last 14 days, which is wonderful. A little caution, we don't want to get always over attitude, because 28 of those were in the last five days. So let's, you know, let's continue to watch, let's continue to do the right thing, wear masks, social distance, wash your hands, so we can keep those down. Mitchell only had 26 cases the last 14 days, and Yancy had 45 cases the last 14 days. So I just thought I would share that. Again, our FEMA representative has issued eight submittals that are sitting in the portal, and yes, we're ready for them to give their blessing and send us our reimbursements for those submittals. And then four more submittals are going in this week for January and February. Two of those are expenses that have to do with COVID, and two of those will be expenses that are from the vaccine clinic. So that'll be a total of 12 submittals that we will have sitting in FEMA's hands for approval. Any questions about COVID or anything that we've talked about so far? So Friday is our vaccination day. We need to make an appointment for those first doses. If you know anyone, 733-8273 is the number to call from 9:00 to 11:00. That's when we can man those phones to get those appointments. All righty. Day mark lease, when we amended the agenda. This feels like deja vu because it is. We approved this last June to be effective for July the 1st. When we approved it and signed it, we sent it to them, and then their attorney had a hiccup with it, and the hiccup is on page four, and it's simply that if funds are cut from the state of North Carolina for day mark, they have 60 days in which to vacate the building. That was the only thing they needed changed. So it's March, and I'm asking that we allow the chairman to sign this lease, and this lease is good until June 30, 2023. So it's a two-year lease. Any questions?
Not to gnaw the bone too much, but when they say cut funding, I mean, is that like, they will completely cut funding, or if they? is that like they will completely cut funding or if they, I, I, you know, I, I don't know if that gives them the opportunity, no matter what happens to them financially, they can opt out, which is not a problem, but I just think we need to clarify, is that ceasing operations or just moving to another location?
I think it would be ceasing operations because it says, "In the event that the tenant no longer receives appropriation, allocation, and availability of funds by the state of North Carolina to the lease lease, then the tenant may terminate the lease." Um, Tim and I have been virtually to some day mark meetings, and that budget has been cut and cut and cut, and I think that this is a way for them to say, you know, the state couldn't make a decision to cut us, period. And if so, then we need to be able to get out this lease in sixty days rather than, uh, uh, you know, have to be obligated for that money, which I don't think we would have held them and said, "Oh, you got to pay this anyway," but they just felt it needed to be in there. And again, we apologize it took till March to get it back, but it's March, so.
They are doing everything over the phone, so nobody's going over there to the building, so, well, let's see, the fire, you know.
So we need a motion on that.
Move to accept the amended contract lease.
Second.
All right, Dennis has made the motion to, uh, accept the amended contract lease for day mark, and Tim Phillips has seconded. How would you vote on that, Mr. Woody Hall Young?
Woody Hall Young Jr. votes aye.
Martha Hicks votes aye.
Tim Phillips aye.
Dennis Aldridge aye.
All right.
Just a couple of other points. Uh, Caleb and I will start departmental budget meetings next week. I look forward to working with Caleb. I think it's going to be a, a good year, so, um, we're going to roll up our sleeves and get to work on that. I will remind our nonprofits that we have sent the applications out. They are available online on our website under latest news, so any nonprofit, the grant applications are currently online. The ARC broadband grant to the Chamber of Commerce is still available. Those are due back April first to any providers that are interested. And Grandfather Mountain and Mr. Jesse Pope has come up with a litter solution to have a Avery County Clean Sweep Day on March twentieth. Uh, any interested parties there, we will get this on our website. They are to contact, uh, todd@grandfameth Mountain dot com to get signed up to help with that. Uh, Eric and Solid Waste has agreed to do their part. Travis at the DOT is going to do his part. And, uh, Jamie Wood with the Division Eleven, um, North Carolina Department of Transportation stated to me that they will be in Avery County the first week of April, but they will only be picking up major highways, which are three-twenty-one, two-twenty-one, nineteen-E, one-ninety-four, one-oh-five, one-eighty-one, and one-ninety-four. So our side roads are up to our local DOT, so that's who I hope this sweep can help. And, uh, I'm going to hold their feet to the fire that we get a litter sweep from the state four times, so it's supposed to be quarterly. So, uh, Mr. Wood said that they would, uh, be in touch with me when they were going to be in our county. Any questions about anything else from any of the board? Okay.
All right. We'll move right along to three point four B, our Finance Office Report, Caleb Hope.
Good afternoon, board. Hope you all are doing well. I have four items today, the first of which, uh, we have received an emergency management grant, it's the EMPGS grant in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. This allotment is to reimburse the county for radio and equipment purchases. We request the board, uh, to adopt the following budget amendment to debit General Fund Ten fifty-two fifty dot seventy-eight hundred, which is the capital outlay radio equipment, and to credit emergency management grant, General Fund Thirty-eight hundred in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred and ninety dollars.
Do I hear a motion to adopt this budget amendment?
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to adopt it by Mr. Woody Hall Young Jr. and second by Dennis Aldridge. How do you vote, Mr. Young?
Woody Hall Young Jr. votes aye.
Martha Hicks votes aye.
Tim Phillips aye.
Dennis Aldridge aye.
All right. Item two, the Avery County Transportation has received a reimbursement from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners liability and property pool to purchase and install safety device for their wheelchair lifts on each of their vans. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay, General Fund Fifty-three hundred dot seventy-four ten, two thousand and thirty dollars, and to credit transportation, uh, General Fund Item Thirty-six Ten in the amount of two thousand and thirty dollars.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, Mr. Woody Hall Young moved to adopt and Tim Phillips seconded. How do you vote, Mr. Young?
Woody Hall Young Jr. votes aye.
Martha Hicks votes aye.
Tim Phillips aye.
Dennis Aldridge aye.
All right.
Thank you very much, board. Um, the item number three, the Sheriff's Department has received a, a North Carolina Department of Public Safety Governor's Crime Commission Grant. It's a reimbursement for tactical team equipment that's been, already been purchased. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit crime control grant, General Fund Item One Hundred dot seventy-four twenty in the amount of twenty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents, and to credit the Governor's Crime Commission Grant, line item, General Fund Thirty-six Fifteen in the amount of twenty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents.
I hear a motion to adopt.
They adopt.
All right.
Second.
We have Mr. Tim Phillips moved to adopt and Woody Hall Young seconded. How do you vote, Mr. Aldridge?
Not, not sure I know what to say. Dennis Aldridge aye.
Tim Phillips aye.
Martha Hicks aye.
Woody Hall Young Jr. aye.
I'd like to thank the chairperson of the board for spicing up the Finance Officer report.
I was in the process of reading this and all of a sudden.
Item number four, uh, um, the, we have the contract for the auditor. We request the board to make a motion to approve Eschalepsy PA to audit the financial statements of the county of Avery as of and for the year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-one. The audit will begin July twenty-one, and the report, uh, will be issued no later than October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, at a price not to exceed thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. This represents a twenty-one hundred dollar increase from the fa- prior five fiscal years, so, uh, looking back, two thousand and sixteen was the last time we had an increase on this. Uh, and the price also includes the fire commission audit. So authorize the chairperson to sign?
Move, we authorize.
I hear a second. All right, I'll in favor. What do you vote, Mr. Aldridge?
Dennis Aldridge aye.
Tim Phillips aye.
Martha Hicks aye.
Woody Hall Young Jr. aye.
All right, I think that's all that Caleb passed is.
Yeah, I apologize.
All right. We'll move right along to three point four, and like I said, our attorney is not going to be here today. Uh, we can still, can we, did we vote on this? Sandy, the Brit?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
So, um, this is part of the one-sixty ordinance update for the planning and board and our current, uh, I lost my phrase off. Our ordinances. Subdivision ordinances. There are seven ordinances that have to be brought up to compliance by July first. This consultant is part of the School of Government. He works part-time as a professor, so he is well-versed. He is the person that actually teaches the attorneys the class on updating these ordinances. So Michelle asked that we, uh, approve this agreement with him to, uh, do this work and to bring our ordinances up to compliance. It will be four, four thousand nine hundred dollars to complete the task listed.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve, and a second. How do you vote, Mr. Woody Hall Young Jr.?
Woody Hall Young Jr. votes aye.
Martha Hicks votes aye.
Tim Phillips aye.
Dennis Aldridge aye.
All right. I'm really glad to see us getting somebody to do that because I read it over and stuff, and it's a lot more in detail than, uh...
I've been, I've been reading on it for about three months now, and it's, it is... Well, and I think that money, uh, will be much less than what, uh, if we were doing it through Michelle's timeframe in her office, so, uh, plus it's someone who's dedicated to that task.
Who already knows. All right. We'll move right along to, uh, three point seven. We have, uh, minutes for the closed session on January the fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, a special meeting on January the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, and our regular meeting on February the first, two thousand and twenty-one. Do we have anyone that has anything to discuss about our minutes? If not, do I hear a motion that we adopt our minutes?
Move, we approve.
Okay.
Second.
All right, Mr. Woody Hall Young moved to approve and Dennis Aldridge seconded. And how do you vote, Mr. Woody Hall Young Jr.?
Woody Hall Young Jr. votes aye.
Martha Hicks votes aye.
Tim Phillips aye.
Dennis Aldridge aye.
All right. Three point eight, Agenda Consent Items. We've had those to look through and, and study over. Does anyone have a question or anything about the agenda items? If not, we approve those by consent. We have three point nine, our informational items, and then three point ten, our upcoming meetings, and next month is still just one meeting, and then after that, we go to two meetings a month. Before we adjourn, does any commissioner have anything they'd like to say? If not, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So move, second pass.
All right, Woody Hall Young made the motion and Dennis Aldridge seconded. I'll in favor, say aye.
All right.
And we'll go home.